Sorry.
All right, I would like to welcome everybody to this evening's Amherst Town Board Meeting of Monday, November tenth, two thousand twenty-five. And I ask everybody to please stand for a pledge of allegiance. Would I ask our town clerk, France both, please call and roll?
Supervisor Koppa.
Here.
Deputy Supervisor Levin.
President.
Councilmember Berger.
Here.
Councilmember Sukala.
Here.
Councilmember Arnucci.
First item on our agenda is the approval of minutes from October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. That was a public hearing. I'm going to motion to approve those as they appeared in the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the approval of minutes from Monday, October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five. Motion of those as they appear as well.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a proclamation this evening. Councilwoman Berger is going to present on the Town of Amherst, recognizing Veterans Day and all who serve. So before she does that, I'll just thank all the veterans and veteran support organizations and people who are in the audience this evening for your service. With that, councilwoman.
Thank you. It's been my honor and pleasure to be the liaison to the Veterans Committee. And the first person we would like to recognize is Rob Stutz. He's from the New York State Department of Veteran Services. And I'd like Rob and, blanking on the dog's name, Cody, to please come up. And I'd like to present this to you. You're the outreach, outreach team supervisor for your commitment to assisting Amherst veterans, actually all veterans. So we'd like to give this to you. And why don't you say a few words about what you do at our microphone?
Everybody hear me all right? All right, okay. So my name, as she said, Rob Stutz. I work with New York State Department of Veteran Services. So I've worked with Amherst probably since two thousand sixteen. We've had an office in this building. We moved out in two thousand twenty. And now, as outreach team, we have a mobile unit that I actually travel throughout the entire state to assist veterans throughout every community. Our whole focus is find and serve. So if you know any veterans, we do have pamphlets here at Town Hall. I also go to the senior center, starting on the eighteenth, once a month, I'll be going there. So any veterans that need assistance, we're here to help them. So throughout all of New York State, especially Amherst, Williamsville. Thank you.
I'd just say, anecdotally, I, I know for a fact the commitment that Rob has to serving veterans and their families in this community. I've seen it firsthand with my grandmother and my grandfather's benefits after he passed. And I'm all, I'm happy every time they're in the building because we miss having them here. And it's been, it's been wonderful to have them back and present here in the town.
And I too can attest to the help he gave my father and my mother. Now, I have a proclamation. Can I ask all the represent, actually, before I do the proclamation, all the representatives from the Amherst Veterans Committee to please stand up? We're going to take a picture after. You can sit down. I'm going to make you come up after. So what we'd also like to do is we have a proclamation for all the posts in the town. So I'm going to read part of the proclamation. And I don't know if we have representatives from all the posts. We'll see who's here tonight. Whereas Veterans Day is celebrated annually on November eleventh to honor America's veterans for their patriotism, love of country, and willingness to serve and sacrifice for the common good. And whereas the town of Amherst has a rich military history with many heroes who service impacted conflicts, battles, and wars around the world. And whereas on Veterans Day and throughout the year, we recognize veterans, living and deceased. And for those of you who don't know, we have a wall at Amherst State Park that veterans who lived in the town at some point, their names can be put on the wall. And we have brochures in the rotunda. Got to make that pitch. And I lost where I am. Whereas, as we reflect on Veterans Day, we thank the Amherst Veterans Committee for their leadership in organizing the annual Memorial Day ceremony at the Williamsville Cemetery, which brings the community together to honor those who gave the ultimate sacrifice. And actually, if I'd waited a minute, the next whereas talks about our wall. We also do lots of other programs. We try and have representatives from the various posts in the town. So if there's someone here from Amherst, Amvets, Post Forty-nine. Nope. Okay. Wait. Come on. I'm going to make sure I give you the right one. Nope. They're not in the right order. Oh, it's the same one for all of them. Thank you. The VFW Post Four Sixteen. The Jurick Post. Joe, I see you're here. And last but not least, the Lamb Post. Okay. Thank you. We really want to thank them for everything they do, for their members and veterans and our community. So I'd also like to ask all of the veterans to come forward so we can take a picture. I'm sure you're thrilled at that suggestion. Yeah, it is Jess's fault. She asked. Any veteran who's in the hall could join us. Any other veterans here?
So thank you again for all the people who serve on our committee, all the people who serve in the, the posts and all the people who serve in terms of, and who have served as veterans in our community. What, it's really a commitment that all of us, all of us need to acknowledge its importance. And we, I'd like, I'd like to once again just offer a round of applause for all of our veterans here and throughout the Town of Amherst.
And I'm just going to add, if you haven't been to see our memorial wall in Amherst State Park, you really should come.
All right. With that, we are moving on to a couple of public hearings tonight. The first is Resolution Nine Forty-four. It is the adoption of a local law to amend restrictions imposed as a condition of zoning approval for Three Thirty Maple Road, a portion of C two thousand seven dash zero three underscore A. Motion to open a public hearing at this time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I believe Sean and one of the affiliated, Brian.
Good evening. Thank you for taking your time to look at our proposal. Explanations, so everybody here from Amherst can kind of see what we're talking about to build the sports complex. We thought we'd go through a presentation of what we, what we believe it'll look like and what we've been working on for the last few years. So am I changing, I change them right? Assuming.
Your name for the record.
Brian McGrath. And for the purposes of this, forty-two, twenty-five, Genesee Street, Buffalo.
It's a side click. There you go.
Okay. So, so this is the team we've put together over the last few years to make this project happen. Obviously, I'm the top left. Mark Feinberg is one of my partners. He takes care of the Bills and the Sabres. Rest of my partners take care of the rest of the professional teams and the college teams. And we're all from U B M D Orthopedics and Sports Medicine. But this is not a U B M D Orthopedic and Sports Medicine, nor a U B M D project. This is private, private venture. Mark and I are just the primary developers or co-founders of what we're about to show you. Justin Feinberg is helping us on the financial side. And then Madeline Schaus takes care of all their administrative work. What are we doing? We're trying to transform the Gun Club Land into a world-class, year-round recreation and wellness destination. We're kind of redevelop the twenty-five acres that's over there. Part of that is being, already being redeveloped at this point for the softball fields. And will be everything to the east of that property along Maple. It's be a world-class facility. We want to make this place the safest place in the, in the USA to practice and play sports and develop wellness programs for everyone within Amherst and Western New York. We're basically going to build two state-of-the-art, climate-controlled, air-filled structure with a central building, which we'll go, I'll go through through briefly to show you what's going to be within that fifty thousand square feet. And really, we believe this is a, you know, kind of once-in-a-generation opportunity for Amherst, for Western New York, for, you know, our entire region to develop something that we can actually play sports and develop a fantastic world-class wellness program. Where is it? I mean, you all know where I'm talking about. Everybody in the room looks, you know, well, various ages. But most people can remember the Gun Club, which is all along Maple. And I think this is a pointer, and I'll point to my, the way I can see. These are the softball fields that everybody knows have been constructed by the town on this land. And then the town purchased all this land, you know, for the development and to continue town plan of developing a wellness and sports hub within this, this Audubon, Amherst, Central, Central Amherst development area. The seven-one-six health building is right here that we finished developing in two thousand and nineteen. And this complex, you know, will take up the entirety of the previous Gun Club Land and bounce right up to the superintendent's building and down to the softball fields. So what will be in there? We're going to do track and fields, and track and field has really no current home within, within anywhere around where our children currently go to be able to play. And we want to have the ability to have full-scale indoor events in a full-scale, fully-covered, you know, soccer pitch, as well as a two-hundred-meter, eight-lane track, you know, which will be banked for our kids to, regionally, and also for N C A events that can come to this area. It's sports for everyone. It's not just for college athletes or professional athletes. This is for our kids, right up through our seniors. And we're doing this really to develop, you know, a, a great location for sports, athletics, and wellness. We're trying to close that gap, you know, in, in what we can do between, you know, early fall and then late spring in Western New York. And we're trying to decrease the distances people have to travel to be able to play their sports. This is going to be led by orthopedic surgeons and sports medicine physicians to truly make this the safest place for our athletes to practice and play in. And it's going to be built on our CPR programs following Damar Hamlin and that injury. So we've been training over thirty thousand people in Western New York in the last two years, you know, with hands-only CPR. That will continue within this facility. We're also looking at all the spinal injuries and concussions. One of my partners is the leader in the world in spinal, in, in concussions and recovery from concussions all over the NFL, all over the world. People travel here to Western New York currently to meet with John Letty, to hear what he has to say and what his latest research, research is on concussion. So what are we going to build? This is what the structure looks like, and this will get to our, the reasons for why it needs to be as high as it needs to be, which is, this is an indoor two-hundred-meter bank track. These are the sprinting lanes outside of it. If you put the sprinting lanes inside of it, you have to have deceleration lanes and pads here for the kids to crash into. So by putting it outside of the, this field, much safer for the athletes to run their races. And then you want to be able to see all this. So these are bleachers back here. As you can see, even with the height that we're asking for, that, that is because we need the distance across here to be able to accommodate this type of facility. On the other side, here is a full indoor soccer pitch, which will have full height to actually an unobstructed position so that you actually can play an indoor event. Also can be subdivided into multiple other areas to practice in smaller, for smaller workouts. Additionally, there's six hard courts. These are full basketball courts. Can be converted to twelve volleyball courts or twenty-four pickleball courts. And then also a nine-thousand-square-foot wellness and performance enhancement training facility right there. And then the building in between will house concessions, food and beverage, as well as a family entertainment center. So the kids that are there, they're dragged with their brothers and sisters to the event, won't go crazy and tear the whole place down. There's something fun for them to do. Is it, is there a benefit to Amherst? Yes, there's a benefit to Amherst. We've done, we had an outside consultant do this study for us, looking at what the economic impact will be for the Amherst. That will end up being twenty million dollars a year, once we have the stabilization of the project. That's bringing people to this area from close distances and distances of four or five hours away or within the Northeast or across the country, depending on what level of an N C A event will, will be here. But the plan is to have several of those a year in the order of five or six. Not fifty-two, but five or six major events. The rest of this is going to be just for us around here to be able to practice and play the sports that we need to do. There's going to be hundreds of jobs created through this program. And the total, the total cost of our project is about eighty million dollars, all done privately. This is to increase tourism in, you know, in Amherst and make this a premier destination for sports and wellness. What does it do as far as closing the gap? Currently, the only place that you can, kids can run track in Section Six and the ninety-two other programs within Western New York have to drive to Houghton College, about hour and a half away in the summertime. Yeah, they're going there in the wintertime for this. So it's, it's longer. And there's a bus ride for all the kids that have to go down. It's about an hour and a half down, hour and a half back. It's kind of ridiculous. And by talking to the superintendents of schools and A Ds, a lot of kids can't go because they don't have enough buses that we can pay for to take the kids all the way down there. So we need, we need to make that better for everyone. Then the nearest place in, you know, in New York State, you actually have an indoor bank track, is down in Staten Island at Ocean Breeze for similar type of events. So we're going to be competing against them for New York State-level events. And, you know, it's, it's something that we, you know, absolutely need to do. If you want to go outside of the state, it's four and a half hours, you go down to Penn State. But it's not open to the public for the Pagula, you know, tennis, excuse me, track at Penn State. So this is for everybody. We're trying to raise the standards of sports in, in Western New York. And after that debacle yesterday, we clearly need to do something to raise the standards. But, and, sorry, I digress. But the big thing here is trying to make this an unbelievably safe place for our kids from concussion, from heart, heart issues and everything around that as far as A C L injuries, our ability to bring these kids back after they've had an injury, and actually study that in, in amateur athletes, determine what is the safest way to actually, for them to play sports and to be able to look at that in real time and with, you know, state-of-the-art equipment. So I'll leave this to Sean to tell you what our asks are, but just to give you an overview of what we're planning on doing here.
Thank you. Yes, good evening, members of the Town Board. Sean Hopkins from the Law Firm of Hopkins, Sergeant McCarthy. So I'm now going to focus on the actual specifics of the project. And of course, as I proceed, do feel free to ask any questions. I also want to note that Dave Johnson from LaBella is here. Him and his team at LaBella have done an extraordinary job over the course of the past six weeks. And I think he also brought four of his civil engineering students as well. So we welcome them as well. As Dr. McGrath indicated, at this point in time, we all know the site, Three Thirty Maple Road. There's been discussion of development of this site going back approximately twenty years now, all the way that when it was formerly the Gun Club. The site is currently split-zoned, and this was deliberate by the Town Board in two thousand eight. What's shaded in red is Zoned General Business District. And most importantly, that allows what we're proposing in terms of this project. And then along the frontage in brown is a hundred-one-foot conservation area that's zoned Recreation Conservation. It was originally rezoned to Community Facilities and then updated. That is meant to be a buffer for whatever was going to occur here. So we're going to keep that buffer in place. We'll talk about that in a little bit more detail in a moment. So let's talk about the site plan specifics. And Dr. McGrath talked about this as well. Twenty-one point three acres in size, so a very large site. The original plan that we filed and actually presented to the planning board during its October meeting included a five-story hotel approximately here in order to ensure that we have additional parking spaces on site. At this point in time, we've removed that from the plan. We still contemplate, we may come back for that in the future. If we do, most importantly, it will require a separate environmental review pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, as well as site plan approval. So for now, that's been removed. We think it would be an excellent amenity. And as we make sure we have adequate parking for the facility, we may come back in the future. As I indicated, we have the hundred-one-foot buffer along the Maple Road frontage. We have two driveways onto Maple Road. The eastern driveway is proposed to be signalized, just shown here. The western driveway would be gated emergency access only. The sole reason we're providing that secondary driveway is to ensure on Maple Road, there is a secondary means of emergency access to the project site. Each of the domes will have an approximate size of a hundred thirty-seven thousand five hundred square feet. Dr. McGrath explained the rationale for that in terms of the height. We're now showing five hundred twenty-four parking spaces. And I want to confirm the original plan that we presented to the planning department showed the building much closer to Maple Road. The planning department, to its credit, almost initially said, can you push that back from Maple Road? So Dave Johnson and his team at LaBella have done that. And now we're approximately three hundred thirty feet back from the Maple Road rightaway. The Maple Road rightaway is approximately another hundred feet. So the closest residential property on the south side of Maple Road is approximately four hundred thirty feet away. Quite a distance. It is important to note that we've made an updated site plan submission, includes extensive engineered plans. I'm going to give you an example of a couple. This is the lighting plan. Rest assured, we will be installing dark sky, dark sky compliant lighting per the requirements set forth in the zoning code. And as you can see, this plan shows there would be no lighting spillover onto adjacent properties, including the residential neighborhood directly across the street. We've provided an overall landscape plan. And again, I want to highlight that hundred-one-foot conservation area. Extensive screening, which of course will mature over time. We've also showed landscaping within the parking areas and around the perimeter of the property as well. The goal for that landscaping in that conservation area is over time to create an effective visual barrier for those that are traveling along Maple Road and the residential neighborhood across the street. So we are here this evening for two reasons. We're asking you to issue a negative declaration pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And we're also asking for you to modify a couple of the conditions that were imposed by a predecessor Town Board all the way back on June second of two thousand eight in connection with the previously approved Gun Club project that never occurred. And the conditions that I want to highlight that were imposed again in two thousand eight that apply still today to this property are as follows. Condition three, which states that no single retail user can be larger than fifty thousand square feet. Condition number four, that a maximum building height of fifty feet for any structure. And then condition number two, which did require the site to be cleaned up pursuant to the requirements of the Brownfield Cleanup Program. That has already occurred. So the four conditions that we're asking to impose are, one, keep the condition in place to a large degree about the hundred-one-foot conservation area along Maple Road frontage. We've added some language in terms of landscaping and related amenities. No freestanding drive-through fast food restaurants will be permitted on the site. No freestanding drive-through pharmacies will be permitted on the site. And then finally, we will comply with the provisions of the Adult Use Code. None of those uses are being proposed in connection with this project. However, they are holdovers from the original zoning conditions. So we really want to integrate this project into the surrounding community. I've talked about the conservation area. Based on input received early in the process, typically, these athletic domes, and you've all seen them, have a white fabric. We were asked to upgrade that material to a material, a premium gray and silver. We've done that at a cost of the project sponsor, and we're now showing that. We've talked about sound and light reduction measures, including the berm, dark sky compliant, et cetera, et cetera. It's also important to note that this finally will fulfill an objective that was established nearly twenty years ago, to redevelop what was a former brown field into a real good use that will be, benefit not only the town, but also the entire Western New York region. We also think this project will assist in integrating it with the surrounding uses, the North Town Center, U B North Campus, the Audubon Golf Courses, really make this a center and destination of athletic activities, not only for the Town of Amherst, but all of Western New York. Going to walk you through a couple of plans. So this is the original elevation plan that we presented. At that time, the peak height, and keep in mind, that's peak height, measured to here, was a hundred feet. We modified that as much as we could while still preserving the project objectives. And the current elevation plan shows a peak height of eighty-five feet. If you look at it from a mean height perspective, we're actually lower than the sixty-five feet that's permitted in the G B zoning district. We've provided some visual impact plans to show that over time, with the landscaping, buffering, et cetera, we will be providing an effective screen. With it being noted, there's no denying the fact you will see these buildings on Maple Road. It's a visual assessment that just actually was prepared today to see what the view shed would be along Maple Road as you're traveling east. It's also important to note, this project is clearly consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, which is very important. Figure six of the comprehensive plan designates the site as appropriate for commercial and mixed use. As I've talked about, it is the redevelopment of underutilized infill site that's properly zoned. It's also consistent with the town's economic goals set forth in the comprehensive plan, as well as the town's health and wellness goals. So the planning board did take a look at this project, held a public hearing in connection with the requested relief of zoning conditions on October sixteenth, and did issue a favorable recommendation to this board by unanimous vote. Not going to go through the findings, but basically, they did find that this project was was consistent with the comprehensive plan. We also need to consider the environmental impacts as the Town Board pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. We've provided very extensive documentation addressing a wide assortment of environmental impacts. That includes the completed Part One, the full environmental assessment form. The Planning Department advised you quickly that this is a Type I action pursuant to SEER due to the size. A lead agency letter was issued on October 3rd. None of the agencies responded within the 30-day comment period, expressed any concerns with you being the lead agency or about environmental impacts. Terms of what your substantive requirements are, as always, they're as follows. Identify the relevant environmental impacts. Take a hard look at those impacts. And then finally, issue a SEER determination supported by a reasoned elaboration. As always, the Planning Department assists you in complying with those substantive requirements. Going to walk through SEER quickly. Number one, again, was formerly a Brownfield, has been remediated. We've provided you with a copy of their certificate of completion issued by the DEC all the way back on May 7th, 2012. One of the reasons, the timing of this project is of the utmost importance, is those tax credits are still in place today. However, they will burn off. Once they burned off, that means those incentives are no longer available. We also did provide a traffic impact study and an updated traffic impact study prepared by La Bella Associates. It is important to note that what that traffic study showed was the project will not result in potentially significant traffic impacts. It did note that in two locations, we should consider the following. Number one, the Maple Road, the Millersport Highway southbound ramps, there may be a need for some signal adjustments. We'll work with DOT on that. And second of all, it did recommend that that eastern driveway, the full access driveway, be signalized. And for anyone who travels down Maple Road on a regular basis, I think if we can break up the speed of traffic along that long segment, it will actually result in positive traffic impacts. Wetlands, we asked the DEC to consider this as being exempt based on the prior approval. On October 17th, they said, no, we have provided the DEC with a wetland delineation report prepared by La Bella Associates. And I'm going to summarize the findings of that report. What that report showed was that there's two wetlands on the site, and they're highlighted here, a very small one near the town's existing softball fields, and a somewhat larger one located on the northeast portion of the site. Those wetlands total 3.37 acres in size. We will be impacting those wetlands. That will require a permit from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. They were scheduled to visit the site tomorrow. However, they pushed that back for a week because of the snow cover that was unexpected. We do acknowledge there will be a need to provide acceptable mitigation to the DEC. One of the potential sites that we've been discussing with the town is the Audubon Golf Course, which of course is located directly to the north. It's also important to note, when you consider wetlands, you need to consider what are the value of those wetlands? And if you look at the photographs, including the wetland delineation report, these are nothing but typical suburban wetlands that only became jurisdictional on January 1st of this year. And in fact, when the Brownfield Cleanup Program was implemented nearly 15 years ago, there were no wetlands on the site. So, they've only existed since that point in time. We've also provided you with a copy of a no-impact determination letter issued by the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation dated September 24th, confirming the project will not have adverse impacts on cultural, archaeological, or historical resources. So, with all that being said, we think you're in a good position this evening based on the extensive documentation that you can proceed with the issuance of a negative declaration. The Planning Department has provided you with drafts of Parts Two and Part Three of the full environmental assessment form, which are included in the agenda packet. And to conclude in terms of SEER, the project will not result in any potentially significant adverse environmental impacts. So, we're asking to issue a negative declaration, approve the request to modify the zoning conditions imposed all the way back in 2008. And if any of the members of the Town Board or the public have questions, we'd welcome the opportunity to address them. I do want to submit for the record, one additional support letter, and then a much larger support letter that's been signed by 100 individuals, includes various organizations that benefit from the state-of-the-art athletic complex project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Thank you, Brian, for the presentation. I just want to add, from a town perspective, so obviously, the town's had long engagement regarding the idea of doing something on the site. As far back as 2020, when we started working on a recovery plan, we were contemplating expansive neurologic and orthopedic investments in the area. We saw 716 Health and the investment that that brought. That recovery plan pointed towards an economic redevelopment plan. In this case, it was prepared by RKG. And even though we had health and wellness as a portion of that plan, at the time, I don't think anybody on the Town Board or in Town Committees really contemplated leading a large portion of our economic redevelopment to a potential hub for sports and sports tourism. But, in fact, when you look at the town as RKG did, the town has a long history of leading Western New York and New York State. In fact, all of the Northeast in athletics and sports tourism via the North Town Center, which regularly attracts national and international competition, along with UB having hosted, previously hosted State University Games. We have seen that the propensity for that to inject a lot into our local economy. And so, as we began to negotiate opportunities for the Gun Club with American Campus Housing, Dr. McGrath and Dr. Feinberg showed immediate interest in doing something here. I also want to add to the effect that Sean talked about, the golf courses as possible site for remediation of wetlands. I want to be clear, we're talking about creating some offsetting wetlands and revamping some of the rough areas and the three holes behind the Gun Club. And they're doing that in conjunction with our golf architect. There were some drainage and play and rough area interests that the golf architect had. This project can kind of serve as a stimulus for that, those improvements. And so, that's what he's referencing, not a displacement or a replacement of any golf, just a betterment. So, with that said, are there questions or comments from the Town Board first?
Councilwoman. I had a number of concerns brought to me by girls' softball. So, I've worked with the Planning Department, our Town Attorney, and the Project Attorney. And I will be offering an additional condition. And I'm just going to read it now so people know what it is. That the 716 Sports Complex LLC shall be required to address, to the reasonable satisfaction of the town of Amherst, any on and/or off-site improvements to the Amherst Softball Complex caused by and/or resulting from the construction of the 716 Sports Complex. So, my goal was to address these concerns and make sure that the fields we invested in were protected. That's my comment.
And I just want to note for the record, obviously, the project sponsor intends to work closely with all stakeholders, including the adjacent property owners. So, in terms of a condition, we're fine with that. And if issues arise, which we hope they don't, we'll proactively address them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further comments? Sheriff Councilman?
Just two points of information. The first is, when did you think you might begin construction of this? I understand it's very early in the process, but I'm still curious.
Dr. McGrath, I think the goal would be as soon as possible. I do want to note, this is not the final step. This project will subsequently be reviewed by both the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Planning Board, but the goal would be as soon as possible.
And then, once construction begins, it would take how long to complete?
Approximately 15 months is our best estimate at this time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, further comments or questions from the Board?
Yes. Hi, Sean. First of all, I want to ask, those walkways, are they to the girls' softball diamonds showing out this side?
We are showing on the latest plan pedestrian connections, yes, to those.
And is that anticipated, that that parking lot would be able to be used also for the softball diamonds over there, or not so much?
Those discussions have not yet taken place, but they will.
That might be with the covenant that Councilmember Berger will be introducing.
We are looking for some opportunities with shared parking, not only with the town, but also UB as well. And we've had preliminary discussions.
Wonderful. There is a hotel, as we all know, on the other side of, I think it's just outside the first picture that Dr. McGrath...
Hampton.
Yes. And I believe Supervisor and I discussed, it's between four and five stories there.
I think it's a four-story.
Yeah. I'm a little bit...
I'm sorry, five with a penthouse.
So, I've expressed to my colleagues here, and I'm now expressing to you, some concerns about the potential of the hotel there. I think this is awesome. My father is a Section 6 track ref, and this is very exciting to him, which is awesome. But, I am a little bit concerned about what that looks like. I've done this, I'm thrilled to see the additional setback there because I think we're even further when you consider the right-of-way from Maple, from the houses across the street. But now, I don't know where the hotel would fit if that did make it into a possible site plan. And because it likely, if we remove the condition on the height restriction, won't come back before this Town Board here, it would be site plan review with the Planning Board. And I know this is not site plan review, we've had this conversation before, but my concern is approving now and then not seeing a hotel down the road before it goes in, and I don't know what that looks like. So, can you kind of tell us what you would think if it is possible, or?
So, in the previous site plan that we did present to the Planning Board during its October meeting, we showed the hotel approximately here.
The first slide.
Yeah. Oh, let's see if I have it. I do have it.
I think it's still in.
It is, hold on. I thought it was. There you go.
Yes.
So, you can see where we were contemplating it. We still think it would be an excellent on-site amenity. However, in order to sure we increase the number of parking spaces at this juncture, we've removed it. We still have a very strong interest in providing that on-site in the future. But I want to make clear, there's no deal in place with a prospective franchisee. And again, as been noted, and I think the Planning Department documented in the SEER documentation, if and when that occurs, it will require a separate, not only environmental review process, but also site plan approval process. And it will be behind the 101-foot conservation area as well. So, it'd still be setback considerable distance from Maple Road.
Even that way, it looks a little bit better too, because I guess it faces in.
Yeah, and that configuration is literally a holding pattern.
Yeah. The other question that I did have is, so the 100, we're changing the condition on the 101 feet, but I think the removal of the four and a half acres that's in the original restriction is just because we're dividing the property?
That's correct.
Is that correct? So, it's still the same conservation easement depth?
Right, because the conservation area, condition applied actually to the softball fields as well.
To the whole.
This is a portion of what was the original Gun Club property.
So, that's where the difference in acreage...
That's the difference. And that's why we've removed the acreage reference.
That, I appreciate that. Okay, those are my questions for now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions or comments from the Board? If not, I would open up to members of the audience who would like to comment or ask questions regarding the project. And again, as always, I'm going to ask you to state your name and address for the record.
Joe Boytovich, 35, Cyrus. I noticed during the presentation, they made no mention of the economic considerations on this project. They're spending $80 million on this. They made no mention of any charges to be made for access to this complex. I would say they paid it with some type of bond or mortgage, and they require maybe $5 million a year to pay back. That'd be $100,000 a week. How are they going to finance this? They didn't make any mention of charges on this. The way they presented it, it sounded like it was going to be free to everybody. That doesn't seem like a real consideration to me. Also, kind of a side note, I was listening to the news this afternoon about the government shutdown, and they made a mention that this was based on the price of medical costs being too high. Now, and also side note, I was looking up some information on a public official's salary. And when I pulled up a website that supposedly gave me access to this, the first thing they mentioned on there was Roswell Park for some reason. And I started looking on there for the doctor salaries. And they had a huge list of 400, 500, $600,000 doctors. Prices just seem extreme, and we need to know how they're going to pay for this and what happens if they do close it down someday because of the financial considerations. Is somebody really going to come in and take, buy this and be ownership of it, or is it going to be vacant for 20 years? And it's going to be a real blight on the community if it sits there and nobody's using it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kelsey Ryan. I live at 34 Coolidge Drive in Amherst, Snyder resident. I also own Snyder Track and Field, a business in the Village of Williamsville. We have our own facility. It's only 8,000 square feet, so nothing compared to this one. And I also coach at Damon University. So, I can speak from a variety of fronts that the track and field community would benefit immensely from this. I know this was mentioned by Dr. McGrath in his presentation, but I just cannot overstate how important this would be for youth track and field, for college track and field, for high school track and field. Driving to Houghton is just unreasonable to the level of keeping people out of the sport. I know there's many other sports that are going to be involved in this facility, but I did want to speak from the track and field side. Additionally, from my own experience, having, again, a very small facility, I can tell you that when we had to go before the Board of Williamsville Planning Board, Board of Appeals, this, every day that lingers, that goes on, is money spent. So, I'm feeling for this group. I'm not at all affiliated with them. But I know that every piece of this that is debated and every restriction that they are given can be money spent. And as an Amherst resident, I am terrified at them leaving and deciding not to do this and going elsewhere to a community that would embrace this. To have a privately funded facility of this scale is unheard of. So, this is an incredible gift to the town of Amherst. I would beg you to spend my taxpayer dollars on this if this was not privately funded. So, I think this is a crucial thing that should be, that should be brought to Amherst. And anything that the town could do to make sure that these developers do this here in Amherst, I think you should definitely do. So, thank you very much.
Dave Howard, 194 Wrightcruck Boulevard. One thing I was just going to question is, usually on a new building, they have drainage ponds to take care of the water off the site. Is this, I didn't see anything on the site. I just didn't know if that is required or not. And the other thing, I guess I want to say is, I'm totally approve of this. I love it. The wetfields, I got to believe that when the parking lot was put in for the Town Parks Department and that, the land is probably pitched in that way, and that's higher. I'm sure that's why there's wetlands there now. And behind the buildings that there, it was on the first screen, there's a huge plot of land that's not being used. And I don't know, you know, if they're looking for places to put a hotel. That's garbage land, I would call it right now. So, just to throw that out there.
Good. There's some land there.
Donald Lawrence, 22 Coolidge Avenue in Lockport. I do work here in the Chiptewaga, Amherst area. I currently serve as the USATF, that's USA Track and Field President for the Niagara Association, which is all the way from Syracuse, Benhampton, Jamestown, Buffalo. We would host yearly three or four events in this area, and one major one indoors. Also, I'm on the Executive Committee of the U.S. Olympic Track and Field Organization that would entertain bids for Masters National Championships, Senior National Championships, Youth National Championships, several over the next 20 years. I'm also a Western New York Track and Field official, and Houghton is a long ways from Lockport. Many athletes that are in Wilson, Barker, Newfang, Albion, they'll never make that trip. They would definitely come to Amherst, and parents would spend a lot of money. So, let's do it.
Hi, Julie Van Lanty, Parkwood Drive in...
Hi, Julie Van Lanty, Parkwood Drive in Snyder. I'm a soccer mom. My daughter happened to play through, all through college at Houghton. She played at a higher level. I know for a fact that the only indoor full-size soccer field that was accessible was at Salins, and it was a hot premium, and we used to go to tournaments down in Erie all the time. I remember when the World University Games were here. The impact would be great, but as a member of Amherst Concerned Citizens, the words privately funded are such a godsend to hear. I really think the potential of this, I used to always wish that I could afford to have something where there would be doctor's offices, x-ray, chiropractic, all the stuff needed right in one center, like, that would help pay for it and also have the indoor facilities. The, the facility down in Erie had two levels of basketball courts inside. The indoor soccer fields are all retrofitted around here right now, except for Salins, and a lot of them are former hockey rinks, not exactly soccer-friendly. So, but privately funded, yes, this looks amazing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Ashley Waters Schmidt. I live at 265 Maple, so right across the street, just about.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Yeah, sorry. I don't like public speaking. I've just, you know, my grandfather built my home. My family has lived on this side of the street for almost 80 years. I'm concerned about the impact on our community. I think that having a community facility is great, but there are a lot of people that walk down the street every day. This traffic has gotten worse and worse. I can barely get out of my driveway. There's a Jewish community that has to walk to church. I'm concerned at the impact this is going to have with this many more cars coming down the street. I'm also concerned with the safety of my kids playing in the yard, where I currently feel they're safe, but now you have transient people coming in and out, and it just doesn't give me a sense of safety currently, the way it's being handled. Definitely if a hotel is added, I'm not for that at all. I think it can be a really great thing. I would just like to see more being done to consider the people that live in that community that have been there for a long time. I wrote a long email about some ideas, but I also think, you know, crosswalks, we don't have a crosswalk currently between Maplemeere and North Forest, which is a really long distance, and people currently, especially since the softball fields that were built, are running across the street constantly. So it's really not safely traversed on foot, and now you're adding in 500 parking spaces and how many cars coming in and national events. It just, it doesn't seem to work safely, in my opinion. So I'm really concerned about that. And most importantly, my kids and the people in our community who are also concerned, who couldn't be here tonight, we have a really strong community, and I know there's a lot of people that have feelings about it. So, yeah, sorry for my voice being shaky. I think that's everything.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sonia Robinson. I live at 133 Basset Road in Williamsville. I'm so happy to be here. I went to Williams East back in the good old days, the 80s, and we had the bubble then. I don't know how many people remember the bubble at UB. It was a parking lot. So, but I'm a track and field athlete, former track and field athlete. I'm now a coach. I coach pros and kids and everything in between. I think that this facility, what you're talking about, isn't just an athletic facility. We train, so I coached Michael Branigan, who was a Paralympic gold medalist, bronze medalist. He also happens to be the New York State Record Holder in the two-mile. He is from Downstate, from Long Island. And the advantage that they have in Long Island over our kids here, they have facilities, world-class facilities, the Armory and Ocean Breeze, where they can go and compete, and that's a definite advantage. But the other thing that they have is they have competition and community where they see different athletes all the time. It's such an advantage when they go and compete. The other thing that I would like to raise is that what you're planning, I don't know if you meant this on purpose, but we train at Colorado Springs. In Colorado Springs, it's a one-stop shop. It's world-class facilities. We can train indoors, outdoors, and the medical is right there. And so this is truly music to my ears to hear that we're envisioning or planning something that is literally world-class. We've trained all over the world, literally. I've gone to British Athletics and been able to train in Wales, as well as our U.S. Olympic training facilities, as well as in Canada, where they have facility 90 miles away. And because of the status of my athlete, we can go and train there. And, and so I think Western New York absolutely can not only handle it, but make really good use of it, and it would be, give us a really, a technical and competition level that is unmatched, literally, anywhere in the Northeast. I can't think of any place else. You would, might think, oh, Lake Placid. Lake Placid is winter sports. And so it's, it's a totally different ballgame. So I really hope that the board really considers the opportunity here and appreciates the private funding and also giving our, our current young people an opportunity to participate fully in sports and have all the resources behind them so that they can succeed. They don't need to become world-class athletes. We want them to become world-class people. And so that's what sports does for so many people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jane Cox, Harlem Road. One of the conditions on this is that there's a 101-foot wide conservation area. I said, one of the conditions on this project is that there's going to be a 101-foot wide conservation area along Maple Road with landscaping. And Sean Hopkins mentioned that the five-story hotel is still under consideration, and I think the idea of the conservation area was kind of to protect the neighbor's view of the project itself, which will be tall. And I'm wondering if that five-story hotel is going to come back in the future and have to go through the approval process on the site plan, or is this the final conditions for the project? Thank you.
I'm going to just answer that. So, so this is conditions, this isn't a site plan approval. So the whole project, inclusive of the phase that they're proposing first, would have to come through the planning board and planning board process with public hearings for approval. This is a removal of some zoning restrictions that a previous board had put on. Regarding the five-story hotel, anything else that's proposed on the site would still have to go through our normal permitting process. Go ahead.
Hello. Corinne Genovese, 75, Melrose. I am a resident in the town of Amherst and a very proud resident at that. Thank you guys for your consideration, being willing to hear this project. As a former Division One athlete myself, very near and dear softball, when you talk about protecting those softball fields, I've been promised by Dr. McGrath that we are going to protect those, because I grew up at those, at that facility every weekend, and it was cool. As my time evolved, playing three sports in high school, it was amazing to do so, but we were running the halls of our high school, of our middle school. Not good for the shins, by the way, shin splints all over the place. So it is certainly when we have the opportunity privately funded, as, as everybody has been mentioning, I would also second, you could take my tax dollars if this wasn't privately funded. It is so cool to see people wanting to invest into, not only the town of Amherst, but it's a Western New York, really strong buy-in from the community. And, you know, when I was getting recruited, it was, you have to go somewhere and travel, somewhere that plays 12 months a year. To have this type of facility, people that are wanting to invest in our town, Western New York, people that are going to be bringing, you know, to the community, but revenue to our backyard, I mean, this is so special. And I'm excited not only for the people that to get to enjoy it now, but one day when I have children, they'll be able to enjoy it. So thank you for considering it, and I'm super excited for what the future holds. Thanks.
All right. Go ahead.
Stan Sleve, 166 Cranberne Lane. I'm full, I think we need to emphasize what this vote is about tonight. It has to do with removing two restrictions of zoning. That's all, excuse me. That's my alarm for my medicine. That's my alarm for my medicine. No, no, I don't. Okay. I'm not trembling badly yet. So you have to emphasize what this is focusing on. It's focusing on eliminating two restrictions on zoning that were imposed in 2008, way back when, when this was a gun club. So you have to focus on that, and I have a couple of questions. Number one, has there been any consideration, Dr. McGrath, to building the hotel in Millsport where the rest of the hotels are? And secondly, is this big enough inside to handle indoor softball? Thank you very much. Thanks.
We'll, we'll answer some questions after, yeah.
Julie Stein for Heritage Road. I'm actually here as a board member of Amherst Girl Softball League, and I just have two questions. If we can know, like, the distance between our outfield fences and the start of the parking lot and then the start of the building, so we can plan for that. And also, that new designation of the wetland that's outside of the outfield of what we call Diamond Seven, I think, like, we have problems with the water in the outfield? And is that, like, as you re-mitigate those wet fields, like wetlands, will that affect and improve the outfield issues that we're having? Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Dr. McGrath, would you like to offer a couple of answers here? I've got, or Sean, I've got four questions that I wrote down. The first had to do with drainage, and then the second, I suppose ties right in. There were two questions about wetlands, and so can you just talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so I'll talk. First, again, Sean Hopkins, for the record, in terms of drainage, because this project will result in greater than one acre of soil disturbance, we will be required to implement an onsite stormwater management system that complies with the DEC stringent stormwater quality, keeping that runoff clean, and quantity standards, including the need for that system to handle a 100-year storm event. That is all depicted on the engineered plans, engineer's report, et cetera, et cetera, prepared by Dave Johnson and his team. We will be providing bio-retention as well. So although it's difficult for a typical person to understand this, when you actually implement that stormwater management system, it will improve drainage conditions on the site compared to what's there today. In terms of that question about the wetlands, so the small wetland here, that again, is very tiny in size, yes, by filling that wetland and again, installing that onsite stormwater management system, I can't guarantee it, but it actually should improve drainage conditions for that particular field. And I think, Dave, you would verify that, right? So yes, that will improve drainage conditions there. I don't know what the rest of the questions were, Supervisor.
I think that would be a positive for the town, obviously, would be to, to see this project help rectify that. So the other questions that, that were asked had to do with hotel location. I will say, there was a point made about land beyond the parcel, and that is something that Dr. McGrath has brought up to us, the land north of the site itself, obviously not part of the original gun club parcel, but something that, look, the, I would just say that everybody's open to imaginative thought here, and, and, you know, I'll let you guys answer the rest.
That, that is absolutely correct, Supervisor Culpa, and in fact, Dr. McGrath and I discussed that this afternoon. So yes, again, I just want to make it clear that we're not saying there will never be a hotel on this site. That would be disingenuous. If and when there is, again, it will be subject to a separate review process, and I want to make that clear. Environmental review and site plan review.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further?
The distance, Sean, from the outfield.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I just wanted, the one question that was asked, sorry.
As far as softball goes?
Yeah, from, because it does look closer.
Into the microphone, please.
Yeah. Brian McGrath, Steve. So we're, we're willing this to be, you know, good neighbors, especially to the softball fields, you know, immediately to our west. Whatever we do here will enhance their experience, not detract from it. Whether that be water or the ability to hit the long ball, these all things will be taken into consideration for our entire development. The reason we're putting those paths through is so you don't have, actually have bathrooms over near your place. Maybe you're going to build them. I don't know. I don't know if those plans are long-term, but there's, you know, there's concessions and everything here that can add to the, or enhance the, you know, rosy softball, you know, experience through the, you know, through the summer, because this facility will be open 12 months a year. Relative to the hotel, why do you want to put a hotel on the site? Because families that travel distances to play sports don't want to have to get back in their car in between their events and drive somewhere else. That is the enhancement of the hotel. It makes the hotel something we want, because it'll bring those athletic events to our town. And we also, you know, we'll need the hotel because of the, you know, increased, you know, utilization. It is not going to hurt the Hampton behind us, which is, you know, really made more for sledge hockey and, and incredible, you know, undertaking with everything being, you know, disabled rooms, very accessible. This will also have, our hotel will have a lot of accessibility, and it certainly will meet all town standards relative to, you know, compliance with sightlines and everything we're talking about with this facility. But it is, it'll be a separate project because we need to solve the parking issue first, which we think we have by removing the hotel and some alternative parking going forward.
I do want to address one other comment about pedestrian safety. So as part of the proposal for establishing a signalized intersection at the eastern driveway, that would include all pedestrian safety improvements as well, meaning pedestrian heads, striped crossings, et cetera, et cetera, all subject to the review and approval of Erie County. Maple Road is an Erie County highway. So yes, those improvements would be included as well. As far as off-site sidewalks in that area, they're a little precarious, especially on the south side, where there's no green space between the edge of the sidewalk and the edge of the curb. So maybe that's something that can be discussed with the county as it moves forward. It doesn't relate to the project.
All right, anything further? Indoor, oh.
Oh, yeah, the goal would be that it could accommodate indoor softball as well, yes. And I believe, Justin, it's been planned as such, right? Multi-purpose field, so yes, it will accommodate indoor softball.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anything further? Seeing none. So there was a question about a crosswalk. There is a crosswalk depicted. Okay, so with that, I'm going to motion to adopt the seeker findings associated with tonight's. No, first.
No, we have to do seeker.
Going to adopt the seeker findings associated with tonight's consideration of conditions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now I'm going to motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I will motion to adopt the resolution, changing the restrictions imposed, condition of zoning approval.
Second.
At this point, I would like to amend that proposal to include, you have the copy, the language that the 716 Sports Complex LLC shall be required, required to address to the reasonable satisfaction of the town of Amherst, any on and off and/or off-site improvements to the Amherst softball complex caused by and/or resulting from the construction of the 716 Sports Complex, and I so move.
So there's a motion to amend. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
I motion the original resolution as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Could I ask one condition, one question about the final condition? Only because it's a technical question. Is it envisioned that that will be part of the amended declaration of restrictions?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone have a good evening.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is public hearing on Resolution 945, the adoption of local law to amend the zoning map 4654, 6068, 74, and 84 South Linden Street in former South Linden Street right of way, C 2025-01. I motion to open that public hearing at this time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, I'm good, thank you. Mr. Supervisor Board Members, I'm Jeff Palumbo from the law firm of Block Longo. I'm here this evening, as you indicated, requesting a modification of a condition of the zoning approval. Just by way of brief history, we have been working on this project for a number of years, going back to the purchase of this, a substantial portion of the property.
One moment and just give, I see a lot of people getting up to exit. I'm just going to give them a moment to please exit the space so we can continue the public hearing.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's remember there's other public hearings tonight.
You can talk in out there.
Please take it down the hall, though, not by the doors.
Okay, please continue.
Okay, just as I was saying, this, we've been living with this project a number of years, going back to the purchase of a substantial portion of the property from the town of Amherst. As you know, we have gone through the comprehensive plan amendment, Planning Board recommended approval, and the Town Board voted to amend the comprehensive plan to include this type of rezoning, multifamily residential, to allow the development of the proposed 28-unit townhomes. The Town Board then also approved the rezoning, and tonight, the request before the Board is to amend condition number one of the rezoning approval. And that condition was that the form of the proposed structures, excuse me, that the principal structures be limited to four to six units per structure. The second condition, that the form of the proposed structures be consistent with the scale of adjacent single-family homes and be provided with the slope roofs. We have no problem with that. So it's only the question about the limiting the units to four to six units per structure. We did look at that. I know the Town Board asked us to take another look at that, to see if we could develop this so that we comply with that condition. There are several problems, however, in changing the plan, which has been consistent for the last four years with the two buildings, 12-unit and 16-unit building. There's a number of issues that would arise if we tried to change that to, say, for example, four, six-unit buildings and four, and one four-unit building. We have to have 28 units to make this a financially feasible project, and we've said that from the very beginning. If we were to change it substantially to comply with condition number one, we would increase the number of variances tenfold that would be required. We now are before the Zoning Board of Appeals next week, asking for one variance, and that's the distance between the two buildings. We're slightly off what is required by the code. Should we change it to a number of buildings, four, five, six buildings? As I indicated, the variances would be far more substantial, both in terms of the separations between all the new buildings and the setbacks for, from the property lines. The second real consideration, the problem that we have, is that it's just not financially feasible to build five or six different buildings. Two buildings, the way we've designed them is the most economic way to do that. And those are really the two reasons that we're asking for the modification. As I've indicated, we've been very consistent from the very beginning as to the type of buildings that will be built there. You've seen the elevations, they're beautiful buildings, and there'll be upscale townhouse rentals, so they will be, we believe, a positive addition to that neighborhood and to the town of Amherst.
Okay, thank you. There comments or questions from the Town Board? This is an item that we've been dealing with for some time.
I do, so when we added that restriction, when we voted on this three months ago, it was on the recommendation of the Planning Board. But there isn't a new recommendation from the Planning Board. I know in the work session, I spoke with Director Dan Howard, and the planning department had, or the Planning Board has not looked at this again, correct?
They have not looked at this again. They will look at it again when it's at the site plan stage, but no, they have not had, and really, there was no reason to send it back to them, because it was their recommendation to begin with.
Their recommendation was to have the four to six building restriction, right? And so if we, if we remove it today, and then it goes for site plan review, they don't really have a reason to deny anything that is larger than four to six building restrictions.
That's correct. And the Town Board, of course, is the, the board charged with the task of approving the rezoning. The Planning Board's recommendation, as you know, is only that, a recommendation.
I appreciate that. For full disclosure, I don't love this amendment, just in the way that it's coming up in the process. I understand, and I want people to be pragmatically developing in our town and to do it properly, and for people, developers, to earn their money. My concern is that we did just vote on this. We took that recommendation. We had the public hearing based on what was recommended to us, and now we're making an amendment that's outside of that. I know that you're referring it back to, like, this was the original plan, but the original plan came to us with a recommendation that was different than what we're asking for now.
But again, I appreciate that, but it is your task and not the Planning Board's.
Thank you. Those are just my concerns here.
So Jeff, the last time we voted on this, the resolution that appeared before us included that amendment within it, right? So, but that was, what you're saying is that was not what the petitioner had asked for. So in spite of the Planning Board recommending it, the resolution itself wasn't the pure form of what you as a petitioner, your client as petitioner requested.
Correct. And we objected to that condition at the time that the Planning Board made their recommendation.
Okay. All right, any other questions from the Town Board? Comments or questions from the audience?
Hi, Mike Marshall, 90 Elter. Been up here before about this project. Just curious, I know the Lamb Post has made a few inquiries as to site plan questions. We've heard nothing back. Just curious where that's stated. I know the Town Board has received documentation on that as well. Curious if they've heard anything back on that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
My name is Steve Martin. I reside at 74 South Harvest Street, which is right in line across the street. I've been following this, and I have not, I still don't understand the proposal. It seems like every time we come in, we started with 28, removed it to 14, brought it to 20, we're back to 28. I don't understand how we can approve a rezon without knowing what the proposal is and what we're asking for and exactly how we're going to use it. Now we're coming back to 28, where we've decided, or I'm under the impression that seven parcels shouldn't be hosting 28 properties. Further, I still don't understand or want to make certain, as my children are on the street and my neighbors walk their dogs, I don't have a definitive answer as to will all the traffic be coming off of Whirly? I'm under the impression that McIntyre is no longer going to be used. But again, who's to say that the proposal's not going to change later after we approve everything? As a resident of this neighborhood, I want to make sure I understand what is this developer asking for? What are they proposing? What are we approving? And how can we make sure that we stay within that confinement? Everything seems to change every time we come up here.
Thank you. Jeff, can you come back up? So I want to just, so it's, this is not a site plan approval process, so the project in front of us is, or the question in front of us isn't about a specific site plan or vehicle travel direction or impact on site at the nearby post, but a zoning item unto itself. Can you, I don't know if there's, if there's anything you would like to speak to regarding the, sort of a finality of what the, what the petitioner is asking for, but my sense is this is basically asking for the resolution as they originally petitioned.
Correct. And in terms of changing the number of units, it's always been the same. There's always been two buildings on that being proposed, one with a 12-unit and one with an 18, 16-unit, for a total of 28 units. That has never changed. That's always been the same. In terms of the site plan issues, that issue about the access to McIntyre has already arisen in the site plan process, which will be before the Planning Board next Thursday. And we have no objection either way. If the Traffic and Safety Committee wishes McIntyre to be closed, no access, that's fine with us. I believe they're going to probably want it open, so that there's two methods of ingress and egress, both from Whirly and from McIntyre. Does that answer the question?
Yep, thank you. That's ultimately a Planning Board conversation, Traffic and Safety recommendation to Planning Board, so.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's why we're asking the Board to make a decision this evening, because it is on the agenda for both the Zoning Board and Planning Board next week.
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, I'm going to motion to adopt the seeker findings associated with the request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? To the seeker findings, okay. Okay, so I'd ask our Town Clerk for a voice vote, please.
Thank you.
Supervisor Kopa.
Yes.
Deputy Supervisor Leaven.
Yes.
Councilmember Berger.
Yes.
Councilmembers Zuccala.
Yes.
And Councilmember Maranucci.
No.
Okay, next, I'm going to motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to motion the resolution as proposed.
Second.
I'd ask the Town Clerk for a voice vote, please.
Supervisor Kopa.
Yes.
Deputy Supervisor Leaven.
Yes.
Councilmember Berger.
Yes.
Councilmember Zuccala.
Yes.
And Councilmember Aranucci.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is resolution. So the next item on the agenda is Resolution 947. It's the Funding Disposition and Redevelopment Transfer Agreement, CRS 5925 BCD Urban Renewal Parcels. We're going to, I'm going to ask Liz Burkowsky to come up, along with Chuck Malcolm, and present the Boulevard Mall project. We're going to hold the vote until after public expressions first round. That, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Liz Burkowsky, Director of Special Projects for the town. And here with me is Chuck Malcolm from Hodgson Russ. He is special counsel to the town on this matter. Before you this evening is the Funding Disposition and Redevelopment Transfer Agreement between the town, the IDA, the ADC, and Banderson Development. We're asking you to approve the negative declaration relative to this project and the agreement itself, so that the supervisor can execute it. This is yet another project and property this evening that we've been dealing with for a long time. You're probably quite familiar with it already. Just, here's a map to give you the exact location of the property we're talking about. The structure that is there currently opened in 1962 as the first indoor shopping center in Western New York, and had been thriving as a shopping destination for over 40 years. One of the major assets of this property is that it's located near strong residential neighborhoods and UB North Campus, as well as having access to the major arterials and proximity to the Canadian border. Beginning in the 2010s, with the growth of online shopping, there was closure and relocation of stores at the mall, including anchors like Sears. It is currently almost entirely vacant, and the interior of the mall is shut down. Anyone who drives by can see the deteriorating physical conditions of the buildings and the empty parking lots. In 2018, the mall went into receivership and was eventually purchased at auction by Douglas Development for $25 million. You can see some data there that just shows you the decline of the property. The assessed value has declined by over $40 million from a peak that was about $91 million. It's down even below $18 million at this point. The rental revenue has dropped precipitously in the last 10 years, and as he said, the building is nearly entirely vacant right now. The town understandably has been very concerned about this property and has been committing to using its unique powers and the tools in its toolbox to remove obstacles to redevelopment on this property. In 2019, the town adopted mixed-use zoning districts. In 2020, the Amherst Opportunity Zone Generic Environmental Impact Statement was prepared and adopted by the town. 2021, the creation of the Boulevard Central District Action Plan. And then the powers of eminent domain were identified as a possible tool to address the existing lease structure that hinders development. Essentially what we have, it's called a reciprocal easement agreement by which the various tenants on site have overlapping and conflicting rights to the site, particularly in terms of parking, driveways, and common areas, which effectively prevents redevelopment of any of those spaces. So no one could, for instance, build an out parcel because one of the tenants could veto that. They would have rights to the parking on which that structure could be built. So it's been a real obstacle to redevelopment. With the help of Hodgson Russ, the town has identified an eminent domain strategy in partnership with the largest property owners that were Douglas Mall and Banderson Development. And the town has done quite a significant amount of research into how other communities have tackled the problem of their own deteriorating malls. There's nobody who has quite the same situation that we do, but the various departments, town departments, have looked into a number of projects across the country, including Crocker Park in Ohio. There's a project out in Denver that I'm failing to remember the name of. And then we also talked to some folks from Athens, Georgia, to sort of get an idea of best practices, as well as things that have not been successful. In 2023, the Town Board adopted a determination and findings to proceed with the eminent domain strategy. Since then, we've been working on further developing that strategy, negotiating with the current landowners, and preparing the pathway so that when it's time to take the next steps, we can just move quickly through the process, as opposed to having to figure out all the details as we're in process. We don't want to be building the airplane as we're flying it. So that brings us to today, and also helps to explain why this process takes so long. It's a very complicated process, and we've had a lot of details to figure out. We've determined over time that it's essential that the town participate in this project. Initially, the strategy was going to be much more expansive, and the town was going to be spending quite a bit more money. And when we looked at all the potential costs, we started to say, oh, no, that's well beyond the capacity of the town to handle financially. How can we rein that in a little bit by being very specific and strategic about what the town would do? And frankly, shift some of the cost to developers and to private parties. These four objectives are sort of broadly what the town is interested in for this site. Removing barriers to development, I think, is one of the most important things and also one of the hardest things that the town is doing. Number three there, you can see it's essential that we restore the tax base and provide return on the town's investment. That's one of the major goals of this whole project, is to return this to really generating tax revenue in the long term for the town. Once we decided to move ahead with trying to work with private partners, we identified a number of guiding principles and redevelopment requirements so that as we went into negotiations, we knew what was important to us and what we would absolutely have as our fundamental principles for any agreement we would have with the developer. So we are expecting this to be a long-term phased redevelopment of the site, at least 20 years. We expect to get an integrated mix of land uses. We need to see a variety of housing options to address the housing crunch that we have in town right now and to fulfill some commitments that we've made to Governor Hokel in exchange for some funding that we received. We need to see some new roads built on that site to create a block We need to see some new roads built on that site to create a block street pattern so that it's not just one large parking lot again. We want a public park and we want a community center so that this area is um accessible and it is useful to a variety of residents and visitors. Like I said, the town's involvement in this project is essential. Um this is a a perfect example of how sometimes government intervention is necessary to make a project happen. And the town has some uh roles and some powers that nobody else does. The power of eminent domain, of course, is reserved to governments. Nobody else can use that tool, and it is going to be very important as we talk about removing those conflicting leases and the lease rights that go along with it. Um the town, of course, is very uh involved in public infrastructure and would be taking over any infrastructure that would be built on this site. The town's planning and zoning powers have been very important and will help to um design uh not design, to help to uh guide and put some boundaries and guardrails around what will be done by private parties on this site, help to mold this site into something that um we wanna see in the town. And of course, the town uh is the only one who's going to get huge infrastructure investments from New York State, like the thirty-one million dollars that Governor Hokel has granted us for the improvement of the West Side Interceptor project, which will create additional sewer capacity on site. We've identified three critical partners, and these are the partners that we are would be signing this agreement with. Um the first is Benderson Development, our private partner. Uh I think everybody knows who Benderson Development is. They have a proven track record of very high-quality developments here in Western New York and around the country. They are a Western New York company founded here. They're headquartered over on Delaware Ave in the city, and they're moving their headquarters over to Romney Road here in Amherst. Um they are personally invested in the success of this project. They're also uh pretty much ideally situated to weather the current economic uncertainties. They are self-funded organization, and so they are not as dependent on the vagaries of the market. Um so they can, we we have confidence that they'll be able to move ahead with this project once they commit to it. Our public partners are the Amherst IDA and the Amherst Development Corporation, which are both um our economic development partners. They have some unique powers that nobody else has. Uh I think chiefly here, the uh power to establish a PIF district and and to grant incentives to any eligible projects that may happen on the site are going to be extremely important. There'll be a slide later that will show you a little bit more about that. So Chuck is gonna talk about some details of the agreement itself.
Thank you, Liz. Um Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, Chuck Malcolm with Hodgson Russ, special counsel to the town um with respect to the Boulevard Mall redevelopment. And, you know, Liz rightly points out that this is a significant undertaking and it requires a lot of different stakeholders to come together uh to move this property forward. And to get to the point where we are today, where there's an actual agreement in front of the board for consideration, is really the culmination. It's not the end of the road, but it's a culmination of a lot of planning and a lot of effort by both this board, planning board, and staff. Um you know, the the timeline that Liz had up there earlier, you know, really focused on the fact that this was targeted as an area uh needing assistance. There were environmental reviews. And just a little side note on the environmental uh review piece, um you know, before the board tonight, in addition to the approval of the agreement, is a negative declaration that's proposed, but it's really building upon the environmental review that was done um earlier on uh for the with the generic environmental impact statement. When a generic environmental impact statement is done for redevelopment, that shows a lot of planning and foresight and kind of knowing that there's gonna be things coming down the pike. And what's done in those circumstances is that the generic environmental impact statement takes a look at, you know, what are the uh planned redevelopments? What are the proposed uses? What are the thresholds for those uses that we set and have an expectation in what we study? And then the finding statement of the um, you know, following the final generic environmental impact statement lays out how we're gonna look at subsequent actions for an area that we've already studied and a redevelopment we've already studied. So right now, what we're looking at as far as the environmental piece is we're building upon that planning, that environmental review that had been done already for this area, noting that it's consistent with the environmental, the generic environmental uh review that was done previously. In addition to that, um the town developed um and identified this area as an urban renewal area, um adopted a comprehensive urban renewal plan that laid out the town's uh priorities and goals for this particular site. And as part of that plan early on, what was identified is there's a need to bring the stakeholders to the table. There's a need to involve the current property owners, and now with Benderson, um you know, getting uh significantly control of the entire site, um the town is following that plan by working with the property owners, working with the developers, and building off, following the uh urban renewal plan, the determination and findings that this board issued in determining that um environmental, I'm sorry, uh eminent domain was appropriate for this site, and that environment uh eminent domain was necessary in order to push this redevelopment project forward. And as Liz alluded to, there are specific uh challenges, real property-wise, and also in order to, you know, bring this entire area to fruition, there's other uses. There's an another property owner, J.C. Penney, uh that's on the site, um that owns its property. There's uh a prime piece of real estate, the Bridgestone Firestone that's there that needs to um also be dealt with in order to properly redevelop the site. So eminent domain was part of the plan, and this board in its determination and findings noted that, you know, this is a blighted property, this is a declining property, and it's a key property for redevelopment, and that those tools would be necessary to effectuate it. Just a little bit of history, the town's environmental consideration of that, going back to the generic environmental impact statement, and the determination and findings um were upheld by uh the appellate division fourth department in determining there was a proper public purpose, that this is a proper public purpose, uh because it's so critically important to the town. So moving on to the agreement that we already talked about builds off that long history of planning, um this is a multi-party agreement, again involving multiple stakeholders. We have um the largest uh owner of real property interest on the site, uh Benderson Development, um as the private developer and um funder of so of and we're gonna go through kind of what uh specific obligations the developer has versus the other stakeholders. The town um is obviously a party to this agreement because, as Liz noted, the town has the power of eminent domain, and um although the town issued its determination and findings with respect to the appropriateness of the use of eminent domain to facilitate redevelopment, there's a further step under New York State law that's required in act in order to actually vest the title into the town, which we'll talk about. Um and the IDA and its unique ability to grant incentives, establish a PIF district, allow the town to recoup its investments in infrastructure, and um uh property acquisition is necessary, and the Amherst Development Corporation and its ability to facilitate the transfer of real property from a municipality um to a developer. So, taking a look at the sequence of redevelopment actions, you have um Benderson, the the agreement kind of contemplates and is triggered by Benderson's uh acquisition of Douglas Development's interest in the mall property. The town thereafter will exercise the power of eminent domain over the entire site. That includes the J.C. Penney property and the Bridgestone Firestone property. Um just just to recap how that works, as I mentioned, um there's a two-step process in property acquisition. The first step is Article Two of the eminent domain procedure law. That lays out the town's decision to exercise the power, and there's a set of procedural requirements that have to be met, a public hearing, publication, and then ultimately, as was the case here, judicial review, and and that process has been completed. At the end of the judicial review process, there's a period of time in which the town has to act in order to actually acquire the interest in real property. And the acquisition of the real property occurs upon the filing of an acquisition map. Essentially, that's a survey describing the interest in property to be acquired, um containing a legal description. Um that process is done through a court proceeding and the obtaining of an order from a Supreme Court judge that allows the filing of the acquisition map in the county clerk's office. Once that map is filed, the town would be vested with title to the real property. As part of the agreement, Benderson is gonna contribute to the town four million dollars toward the acquisition of um the J.C. Penney and the Bridgestone parcels, and they are gonna be required to waive any claims they may have to compensation. And there's also um leasehold interests that are on the site that Benderson is gonna take um the uh obligation to uh handle the consideration for those to the extent that any of those lises or interest holders have any claim to compensation as part of the process. Um when the town exercises eminent domain, obviously, you know, there's an obligation to pay uh just compensation. That's a constitutional right. Uh that's something the town will do, and Benderson is contributing toward the cost uh of doing so. The town will then uh enter into a a property transaction with the ADC, uh following which the ADC will transfer the property to Benderson. And then once that happens, that, you know, triggers further financial obligations uh from Benderson Development, a significant one and one the town sought to avoid was demolition of the existing structures on the site. That's gonna be a very costly and extensive undertaking that Benderson is gonna handle. Once that's done, both Benderson and the town have infrastructure and road construction obligations as part of the agreement. So uh instead of the town funding all of the road construction, all of the infrastructure construction, there's going to be um an obligation from Benderson to do a portion of that work. Thereafter, the town is going to purchase a portion of the property, approximately fifteen point eight four acres, uh for eight point two million dollars, and the town's gonna lease uh the BAC building for the community center. And there's kind of two components to that. What the town is going to be acquiring is um a site that's been prepared for demo uh for construction and redevelopment following the demolition that Benderson is gonna undertake. A portion of that property is going to be reserved for open space, um and um, you know, available recreation space for the community, which the town's going to uh set up. It's unclear, and and I know it says parkland in step eight that the town's gonna develop, but I would just put a caveat there that the town has not made a determination yet as to whether that's actually gonna be dedicated parkland or whether it's just gonna be open space um available um, you know, regularly in the normal course um for a development. So that's to be determined, um but we'll we'll take a look at uh at advising on that at a future point in time. Uh the Amherst Development Corporation is gonna um work with the town to do an RFP to ensure that there's a housing development that could be constructed on that thirteen point four acres of the fifteen point eight four acres that ultimately is gonna be acquired. Um as part of that RFP, the town's gonna do a competitive process and is going to sell the property um to somebody who is able to pay a significant price to help the town recoup the cost uh of its property acquisition, and also what's gonna be in the best interest of the town as far as what goes there. And um what's also permitted is some kind of mixed-use components with that housing, um and, you know, commercial to the extent that it would serve the existing residences that uh residents that would be living in that um housing development. And then we talked about the town development of the parkland, and there's also going to be a uh PIF district created by the Amherst Industrial Development Agency, where in eligible projects for financial assistance, will participate toward allowing the town to recoup some of the costs that the town made in infrastructure development and property acquisition. So just a couple of diagrams. Um this kind of shows the the infrastructure obligations that are gonna be constructed. Uh the east-west portion from Niagara Falls Boulevard will be the portion uh done by Benderson, and the north-south will be done by the town. And eventually, when the town uh solicits uh development opportunities for the thirteen point four acres uh along Alberta, uh the other uh east-west portion going toward Alberta Drive will be constructed. So as noted, this is the this is the area um that's gonna be desert after acquisition by the town. The yellow is gonna be the uh RFP land that's gonna be uh proposed for redevelopment of housing, and the town's going to sell that to a developer. And then the green portion is the uh open space area um that we're looking at. And to talk about how um the tax revenue is gonna be captured and some of the financial projections, I'm gonna turn that back over to Liz.
The IDA is going to establish a PIF district over this entire entire site, which you may or may not be familiar with a PIF district. I'm sure you're familiar with a pilot that the IDA deals with regularly, a payment in lieu of taxes agreement. Um what this allows the IDA to do is to capture any of the tax revenue that results from improvements on the site, and then divert that to a fund which would be used to recoup or offset town expenditures um pursuant to the obligations in the agreement. So we wanted to make sure that this PIF district would be likely to throw off enough money to cover the town's entire obligations. Uh Dave Manjoya at the IDA worked with the town assessor and with planning department staff to come up with some projections here. They based it on existing projects that um are in the town already. So we have two different scenarios there. The assessor believes that it's fair to project an assessed value of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars an acre or a hundred and thirty dollars per square foot. And uh these are the revenue projections over twenty years that Dave and company came up with. So you can see that's a significant amount of money if we use the school um revenue and the town revenue. The school district has said that they're amenable to this plan. Um that's, you know, showing us at least thirty million dollars over twenty years that would be captured by the PIF fund and then reused to offset the obligations of the town, including any debt service that would be required. Um these, the the projects that were used are existing apartment buildings that also include some commercial space, so that's very analogous to what we're looking for on this site. Um these projections only apply to that yellow area on the map, that RFP for housing area. It doesn't that those projections do not include any tax revenue that might come from the land that Benderson is going to retain because we don't yet know exactly what Benderson's going to build there. If they have an eligible project, then that revenue would also go into the PIF fund. Um pure retail would not be eligible, and as we know, Benderson often builds a lot of retail, and that that would certainly be an eligible, pardon me, that would be an allowable use on this site, though not eligible for any pilot. If Benderson were to build uh mixed-use buildings, if they were to have office space, um if they were to build housing themselves and met certain conditions, then that project, that portion of the site, would be eligible for being included in the PIF fund. So this uh thirty million dollars plus that we're projecting over twenty years would uh come simply from the housing component of this site that would be um RFP'd by the town and the ADC. We believe the town assessor agrees with us that these are very conservative projections, that those assessed values are conservative, and that we've used a conservative number of housing units on site as well. So we expect that the PIF fund would actually throw off more than this, but even if we got this, this would be more than sufficient to cover the town's expenditures. This is uh just a preparation of what those anticipated expenditures would be and how we would expect to be paying for them. Um you can see eight point two million dollars in land acquisition. You can see three point four million dollars in roads and drainage, one point seven in sewer, one point four in water. That entire list there, we would expect to see it offset by both the PIF reflow and by the um proceeds of the RFP. So the sale of land to private developers for that construction of housing, we would uh receive that money back from the ADC minus the ADC's expenses and handling the transaction. We would expect to uh receive that and use that to offset any bonding that we might have done, and then um be able to use that in our annual budgeting for any of the work. done, and then be able to use that in our annual budgeting for any of the work that would be done as part of the sort of annual regular departmental work. So, for instance, if there was paving to be done, and that could be done by highways, we might use the, the PIF money to fund that as part of the capital improvement plan for the year. So this gives you a summary of that, and really, the details are important, but the takeaway I want for you here is to know that the PIF fund is projected to more than cover these expenses. So if you were to approve this agreement, and it's implemented, implemented the way it's intended, what we would see is a phased reactivation of the site. It would lead to greater density and mixed-use development on that site. We would see generation of long-term revenue to the town, the school district, and the county. Once that PIF expires, it would expect, it'd be expected to be 20 years. After the 20 years, all of the tax revenue would go back into the general fund. So we want to see high-quality development here that would meet our needs and would be eligible for pilots, but we need to see ultimately development that's going to throw off tax revenue in the long term for all of the taxing jurisdictions. We expect to see a high-quality commercial retail development, knowing that Benderson builds high-quality commercial retail developments. We expect to see a variety of housing to meet the needs of Amherst residents, including anything from senior or affordable housing to workforce to market rate to luxury, and there could be a combination of any of those within smaller projects or within single buildings. And we will see a community center with a park adjacent. So I think you'll see a lot of things on this site that will be attractive to a wide swath of Amherst residents and be bringing particularly commercial activity, retail activity in from outside of the town. So like I said, we're asking you to approve the negative declaration today and the agreement itself, and Chuck and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have right
I just have a couple of things that I'd like to clarify from what you said. First of all, I know you mentioned it later in the first part of your presentation, but lest anyone have any confusion, when you referred to agreements made with Governor Hochul, it was to build more housing units as a stated thing, and that was the $31 million grant funding for the West Side Interceptor to make sure our sewer infrastructure, which will benefit the whole town, is improved upon. Is that correct? If I understand it?
That's correct. Yes, we committed to about 1,500 housing units over broader district than just the mall property, but we expect to see hundreds of housing units on this mall property.
Wonderful. And then, as I'm aware, but I want to again confirm, decreased assessment value would increase the tax burden of the payment of the tax levy on all property owners in the town, you know, including the residential ones. So, you know, we're looking at a 20-year PIF. I understand all of that, but eventually, when this property is fully back on the tax rolls and has, hopefully, a much higher assessed value, it would then offset the tax levy burden on other property owners in the town, correct?
Correct. And just to be clear, it's the increment, the tax on the increment that goes into the PIF fund? So the, the existing assessment, the existing value, the tax on that, would continue to flow to the town and to the general fund. So it's not as though there's no tax being collected on the property while it's being redeveloped?
But it's also not decreasing, correct? Like, if, if this property were to continue to blight out and, and less, you know, J.C. Penney left, the, I could assume, and I guess you would tell me better, but, but the assessed value would continue to decrease and continue to raise the tax burden of the levy on the rest of the property owners in town?
Absolutely. That's where we are right now. We see sort of a downward spiral without any intervention by the town.
Thank you.
I just, I want to just reiterate too that not all of the property will be in the PIF, right? So if it's not eligible, so we're expecting a large amount of reinvestment that will be fully taxed and not dedicated to this PIF stream, so.
Retail that doesn't otherwise qualify for an exemption for financial assistance.
Deputy Supervisor, whoops, sorry.
I just want to say, Liz and Chuck, this is a challenging, complicated project that's been happening behind the scenes for a very long time, and I think you guys did an excellent job of kind of walking the board and the audience through this project because there are a lot of moving parts. So I just wanted to say thank you very much. I thought it was, it was well done and very easy for anybody who might not be aware of all the things that are happening. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Councilman.
Yes, I, I echo the deputy supervisor's comments. This was a very clear, easy-to-understand presentation. I think you both did an excellent job, and I want to underline this, I know you said it, but I, it's important when the call, I get calls from constituents, there's more than 400 potential apartments in this project, and it ranges from, we'll say, more affordable housing all the way up. Amherst needs that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you both. I did say we were going to hold this vote until after public expression, so at this point, I'm going to motion open public expression.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There is a list. Andrea Morganti, you're first.
I don't get anybody's. After public expression, can we have a? Good evening. Andrea Morganti, Getzville, New York. The elections have concluded, and it's now time for our community to move forward in a spirit of cooperation and accountability. On behalf of the Amherst concerned citizens, I would like to reiterate that our mission remains steadfast. We will continue to serve as an informed and vigilant voice for Amherst residents with an ongoing commitment to education and civic engagement. Since the conclusion of the election, we have experienced an unprecedented number of requests from residents seeking to join our group, reflecting a growing public interest in town matters. Onward. We'd like clarification regarding an issue that remains a question for many residents. On November 6, during an interview on W B E N morning show, Supervisor Culpa was asked, "Who will foot the bill for eminent domain?" Supervisor Culpa, your response was, "Ultimately, Benderson is going to be helping us with money to deal with Pennies and Firestone. Those entities are the two remaining components that the town is responsible for." You went on to say, "Benderson will take care of it. There won't be any town out of pocket. It's really a great partnership for us." However, the contract states that the town will be responsible for all costs associated with eminent domain. We understand that Benderson will pay the town $4 million to be used towards the just compensation to the Comden East at the property, but what about the other costs associated with eminent domain proceedings? Given these conflicting statements, we would like clarification to help the community better understand the town's financial obligations in this matter. When will residents be presented with full financial disclosure of costs such as legal, bonding, tax abatements, or any additional cost of eminent domain? Thank you for your attention.
Okay, thank you. I think the presentation covered most of the costs. We have a $4 million value or just under on the two properties remaining. That's where that number came from with Benderson. And again, we're, any, any soft costs incurred by the town are meant to be dealt with through the PIF and the future recoup of what we anticipate being mass, massive taxable value increase on the space.
Jerry DeCosmo, Meyer Road. I just have a question. During two of the Meet the Candidate debates, Deputy Supervisor Lavin said, after the, a question was asked about how do you plan to keep taxes low, you said, "We've been, we've just been audited by the New York State Comptroller Office, and the audit came out, no problems at all. Have all the town board members reviewed the final version of the comptroller's audit? And where can the residents obtain a copy of the audit?"
The audit? Yeah, I, I don't know what you're referring to, but, so, I mean, it was a comment at a candidate's forum.
Yes. There was, according to the New York State Comptroller's Office, the comptroller's office conducted an extensive audit of the town in the first half of 2025. So based on what Mr. Lavin said, that the, the, the audit was done, and the town came out, no problems at all. So I'm wondering, have all the town board members reviewed the final version of the comptroller's office, and where can we obtain a copy of that as the residents?
That hasn't been put out yet, but thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name's Ron Schubert. Dan Troy Drive. First of all, I would like to say that I probably have lived in Amherst longer than, I know I've lived in Amherst longer than anybody on this board and probably anybody in this room. I've been a longtime resident. I haven't lived anywhere else. I started out in Cleveland Park Terrace. That's in Eggersville, if anybody wants to know where that is. I've lived in Ransom Oaks, and I've lived in, in Williamsville now. I wanted to thank this board. I've been to probably almost every meeting for the last couple of years. You've gone through a lot, and I want to thank this board for what you've done, moving us forward. I drove by the Westwood this morning and noticed there's big sign up, Willdale Park coming soon, Erie County Park. And that's a great thing because what could have been there? Might have been housing. I think there's going to be housing, a cemetery, an old folks home, all kinds of nonsense. We've kept the, the, the country club, the former country club, green, and that's a great direction that you've taken us in. I also want to say I support your efforts regarding the Boulevard Mall. That was a great presentation tonight. No one should have any questions as to what's going on there. That mall, as has been stated, is blighted. If you do nothing, it'll just sit there and get worse. So I want to thank this board for doing what needed to be done and needs to be done to move that forward. The Maple Road property, again, the former gun club, how long has that been sitting vacant? Finally, there's a plan. It's a great plan, and I'd like to see that move forward also. And lastly, we've heard a lot about Station 12. That's finally moving forward now, too. So everything is looking good. I think the Amherst has a bright future, and I'd like this board to continue that momentum in that direction. Thank you.
Joe Wojtovich, 35, B. Cyrus. I came here hoping to present a lot of information on the mall topic today, but I see there was a half-hour presentation that was not in the agenda. Wondering how that came up. But I shouldn't be surprised because Thursday afternoon, I started hearing about the mall project on the news. I went to see this online. Town agenda wasn't even released yet. News, the media was getting information on this before the public had it. Well, I finally researched some of this. Some of the information's already been presented, so I'll skip through that part. One thing they did mention is that, on top of the town buying back the 15 acres, they will also have a lease, a separate parcel for $406,000 a year for 30 years. Oh, that's going to be indexed 2% a year also. So after 30 years, it'll be paying $16 million directly to Benderson for that property. That pays for most of what Benderson will be paying for the mall itself, so we're paying for Benderson back over time. Another thing I noticed is that they were going to be transferring the property over to the Amherst Development Corporation for a dollar. I was reading through there, and they mentioned that, that's according to section 1411 of the New York State law. I pulled up that law and started looking through there. I found item three, which says, "Before any sale or lease to a local development corporation, under this article, it shall be authorized, a public hearing shall be held by the local legislative body considering the proposal or lease." There is no public hearing scheduled for this. So if you pass this resolution today, it will be taken to court, and the court will kick this out. In case the board want to try to slide it in quickly, as in tonight, for a public hearing, you can't do that. It also requires a notice of hearing shall be published at least 10 days before the date of the hearing. You can't do it right now. You might have to do it later. I'm calling the board then to propose the vote on this resolution until state laws can be accommodated. A vote on this today would bring about a court action, which would postpone any action on this for months and allow the residents to further investigate who is making the money on this deal. According to what they showed on the charts previously, the town will be on the hook for about almost $20 million the next year for all the demolition and purchasing property, putting infrastructure in. I looked at the 2026 budget. It's not in the budget anywhere, and it's not in the C I P. Explain to me how all of a sudden, this $20 million is going to suddenly appear. If they think the residents are going to put up for a bond like this and not having sufficient notice, I don't think that's going to happen. You could probably expect a permissive front of them on that coming forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Stan Sliva, 166 Kramer Lane. I wish people would abide by the rules of procedure that the town board adopted, were written, last adopted and amended in 2019. What Mr. Wojtovich spent time on is stuff that requires attorney input and is not covered by the rules. As it relates to the project itself, I'm all in favor for the board adopting the resolution and signing this agreement. It's been a long time. This is only a very minor step toward actual redevelopment of the mall, and it's long overdue. And I can remember sitting in a, in a conference room five years ago, I think it was, where this was first proposed. It's about time that we started acting on it, and you have to read the agreement to see what the conditions preceded are to the town filing its map and acquiring the property. Thank you very much.
Ray Berry, Williamsville. I have three questions. Are you guys aware of any hazardous waste on that site at all or where the Boulevard Mall is? Okay. And if there is, whose responsibility is it to clean it up? Who is responsible for the money? Is it going to be taxpayer money or somebody else?
Peter Gorski, 99, Chris Wood Lane. This is the first public meeting I've ever attended, and I saw on the news we're going to be discussing the Boulevard Mall project, and it's something I feel strongly about, and I want to finally come and give my opinion. I am incredibly supportive of this project. I think it has the opportunity to become one of the crown jewels of Amherst if done properly. This sense of community in the epicenter of Amherst, I think, could be a massive boom for this community and from an economic standpoint, from a sense of more housing, bringing people together, especially with it being so close to U B North, you already have a large population there. I just, and also, this was a remarkable presentation. I thought you guys did a great job of giving the audience all the information we need to know. I greatly hope I get to see this project move forward one day and hope that it become a plan for other malls, both in Western New York, and maybe if we do it so well, even throughout the rest of the throughout the rest of the country, of what to do with other abandoned malls, or malls that aren't getting nearly as much use as they used to. So, great presentation, this is a great project, and I look forward to seeing it actually be constructed in this town, and the final product. Thank you very much.
Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, um, I just wanted to just briefly address a comment that was made with respect to the legal procedures that are being followed by the, um, consideration of this agreement tonight. Uh, the gentleman who spoke referenced Section 1411 of the not-for-profit corporations law. He's absolutely correct, that that does require a public hearing to actually transfer the property to the ADC. Um, the town does not own the property, yet. That's something that needs to happen. Um, in order to do that, we need to start a proceeding and get a court order, file the acquisition map, at the appropriate time, when the agreement is entered into, uh, to actually transfer the property to the ADC. There will be a public hearing, but the resolution in front of you sets forth a framework agreement, does not, uh, require a public hearing under the law. Thank you.
Chris Van Gasky, Mill Street. I'm very familiar with Boulevard Mall. I've had businesses there over the last five decades. Uh, it was a phenomenal mall, very, very successful, uh, for all the businesses that were in there. What I'd like to know is, you're allocating $4 million for, Bennerston's gonna give the town $4 million for the costs of eminent, demanding J.C. Petty and the Firestone, uh, facility. I'd like to hear from the attorney, what a judge has to take into consideration when awarding damages for the taking, because I think $4 million, based on numbers I've heard the last year and a half, is very, very, very low. Thank you.
Yeah, Chuck, do you wanna come back?
As I mentioned earlier, um, the, uh, Constitution sets forth the just compensation requirement when the town acquires property of eminent domain. That essentially is the fair market value of the property, is at the date of condemnation. So, at the time the, uh, town acquires the property, there'll be a date of acquisition, and it'll be a fair market determination of what the property's worth at the time the town acquired it. Now, there are provisions, you know, for damages, or compensation for fixtures, or other things that, that may go into account, if the, uh, property owner were to file a claim. Um, but, you know, is exactly what that is, it's, it's a methodology that's employed by, um, an appraiser, and generally speaking, if you can't come to an agreement with the, uh, condemnedee as to what the value is, there's a procedure that follows the acquisition, so the town will acquire the property, and then there'll be a subsequent proceeding to negotiate and, and deal with the, the actual cost that's owed. Um, and typically, that's an exchange of appraisals, and, and expert testimony, if it were to ever go to a trial.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm gonna motion to adjourn public expression.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm gonna motion Resolution, uh, 947, the Funding Disposition and Redevelopment Transfer Agreement, CRS 5925, BCD Urban Renewal Parcels, uh, which is inclusive of a negative declaration, and the resolution body.
Second.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
And with that, I had a request for, um, a five-minute recess, so we're going to, uh, take a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Do you have to make a motion for that?[907.13]